Alderman Persick?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Studer?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselor got the approval of the minutes for February 17th, 2015 before you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes from February 17th and have them placed on fire.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second? Second, second by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion? Roll call, hold please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
All right, mayor's report. Two items on the docket tonight. The first one is a resolution in regards to the, what we call, local government distribution fund revenues. Those things are in jeopardy once again. To kind of give an explanation on what the, you'll hear people say the LGDF kind of means, the local distribution, government distribution fund was established several years ago by the state where basically a portion of the income tax that everybody files every year that goes to the state comes back to the local communities and as to provide services. So what it's basically saying is money that we put in income tax, the portion of that's going to come back to the community that we live in to provide the basic services that we need within this community. It's once again in jeopardy. I say once again because four years ago, it was always established that the municipalities would get what we call 10 percent of the income tax share and it was based on the map to population that you had within your city. So we had five, six thousand people, so based on however formula they worked it out, we'd get 10 percent share. Four years ago, the state in their infinite wisdom, because they're running short on revenues, decided to withdraw some of the money away from the local municipalities to help pay their bills, which they reduced it from a 10 percent share down to a 7 percent share. As we noticed, they still have not paid their bills and once again, they're looking to take more money away from local governments to provide, basically to pay for their bills. Right now, the word out there that they're talking about is taking as much as 50 percent away from local municipalities to help fund their deficits downstate. It's very troubling for us as local government because we are, as I feel, we are the nuts and bolts of public safety within our communities. We're the ones that provide the basic needs, the basic services for our community and ensure the public safety is met more than anybody. And for the state to utilize that fund to pay for their bills is, I could think of several words for it, but it's really, basically, it's not right. We stand to lose about 8 percent of our corporate budget, which is probably about $280,000 to[208.34][208.34]$300,000. That's quite a significant amount when we've been running on a lean budget for several years now because of the downturn of the economy and the continued fund reduction by the state for our local, from our local share. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read a resolution and this will go to the governor's office as well as our state representatives. I spoke to our state representatives several times in regards to this. This is money that we can't bear to lose. We know, council up here knows we run on a bare budget to continue to take money away from the local municipal government to even hurt us even more significantly. So this is something that's coming from every municipality out there in regards to their opposition to the local government distribution fund. The resolution reads, "Whereas municipalities are frontline providers of government services to citizens, and these services include police and fire protection, parks, infrastructure, water, sewer and utility services, and snow removals. And whereas the state of Illinois has longstanding tradition of collecting tax revenues on behalf of municipal governments, and municipalities have relied on shared income tax revenue to provide service to taxpayers. And whereas municipalities have fewer options to raise significant revenue and rely on the full amount of revenue that the state collects on their behalf in order to fund the essential quality of life services expected and relied upon by community residents. And whereas the General Assembly increased the state income tax without providing any new revenues to municipalities, and this loss of revenue has left the municipal share at levels collected during the Great Recession. And whereas the governor has proposed a 50 percent reduction in the local share of the income tax during his fiscal year 2016 budget address, reducing local revenues by over $600 million. And whereas the loss of the state's shared income tax revenue would result in elimination of countless jobs, local tax increases, program and service cuts, and it could increase debt burdens that would be felt by all citizens. Whereas the city of Wilmington will lose nearly $300,000 from general corporate fund, and now therefore it be resolved that the city of Wilmington urges the governor and the General Assembly to protect full funding of the local government distributor fund and other revenue sources that allow local governments to provide the health, safety and general welfare of their residents." So council, somebody's got a motion to approve this resolution?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 2015-02, a resolution urging the governor and the General Assembly to protect full funding of local government distributor fund revenues.
That motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Studer, any discussion? One other thing I'd like to urge, you know, only council, but citizens as well, get hold of your state representatives, let them know how important this is to your community and what it could stand for. We could potentially lose a lot of our services if we lose this revenue. I guess I'll print the papers so everybody knows. Move to contact for sure from local, absolutely, we'll go to local papers and make them all aware of it too. I think a roll call, hold please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, a few other items. Were the, the, no packets, you have the park facility reservation request application. And it's just for informational use only. I know Alderman Kirby Hall and Alderman Evans have been working with Joey Ziller on putting this all together. If you have any concerns, maybe they might, they might need to be added or whatever, please get ahold of them, let them know that this is what their plan is to use for any park reservation request. Also, let everybody know, early voting for the consolidation election begins March 23rd through April 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at City Hall. And the Chamber of Commerce will be hosting their candidate's forum in the Wilmington Council chambers on March 19th. I believe that's a Thursday, Thursday at 6 o'clock p.m. So make everybody aware of that tomorrow. And that's it for the mayor's report. Do we have any citizens' comments today?
Yes, I have two things. One, first of all, is the government taking a census here in Wilmington right now?
What do you mean, like a?
Like a census, you know?
Are there census takers coming around?
No, there's not a census.
Well, I'm getting, I'm getting phone calls saying they're the U.S. government and they are sending out a form for me to fill out. I seen the form. The form wants to know what time I leave for work, how much money I make.
Sounds like a vacation.
And it sounds like a scam. That's why I wanted to come to the council. Is he the only one getting this?
Need, if you ever see anything like that, the first thing to do is, if you do something like that, get ahold of your local police department, you know, the 2811 number.
The form looks legitimate.
Yeah.
And since I didn't reply to it, I'm getting phone calls. I've got like about 10 phone calls.
I would, you know, see if it's legitimate. Sometimes, you know, if you have an attorney, have them look at it as well, so.
Okay, so nobody did get something else?
I haven't personally, but I mean, if it's defined, if something is being defined scam, then that's something that the local law enforcement needs to be aware of, so.
This form is two booklets, one for her and one for me.
It's like three one in the household.
You know, it, yeah, I would, I would say.
Okay, I just wanted to check to be sure that, you know.
Yeah, usually, you know, talk if you have an attorney, you talk to the attorney about it, talk to the local police department. Could be legitimate, I don't, I get on you.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
All right.
Okay, that's one. The second one I hear that they want to close, the railroad wants us to close Cape Town Street, okay, by Chicago Road, and that we would have to go through Chicago Road to get into town. Number one, that is very unsafe for residents in the North Coast. They want to go down, dig down, first of all, so trucks can get to it, right? Is that what I understand?
I, no, I think it's more for emergency equipment, just to kind of, kind of update. Last meeting we had with Union Pacific and IDOT, they have backed off the proposal to close Cape Town Street. They're looking to modify Cape Town Street. It still don't look good. They're backing up the earlier proposal, it was a proposal they'd come up with where, you know, what do you guys think if we close Cape Town Street, are we going to do this? It was very easy for me to say, no, not going to work. So they're having some, yeah, the fire department was in the meeting and everything else.
Right, the fire department and the ambulance are on the other side, like two blocks away. It's so easy for them to come down Cape Town. If they close that off, they would have to go all the way to 55 to come around. People's lives could be jumped on.
Well, that's why, one of the reasons they backed off that proposal to dig down underneath, that was for the emergency equipment more so than anything. They backed off the proposal to close Cape Town Street. So the last word we got, they have no intention of closing Cape Town Street. Their challenge is, is trying to make the approaches to the, to the railroad track when they increase it and everything, they're looking at gradient, gradient increases and all this other stuff. That's their challenge they're facing right now because the way they have to slope everything and how it could impact businesses in that area, how it could affect the roadway as far as the slope.
I just think it's very different to the, the safety of people in North Coast.
I trust myself and these guys, they're fully aware of the effects and they basically heard a lot of the chatter from myself and the whole staff.
I don't even drive around Cape Town Street now because it's so, you know, it's dangerous. People fly around that corner like crazy. If it rained and they ducked down, it would all flood. So you wouldn't even get through there.
There's, there's lots of, yes, we know it, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make my comment about it. I'm worried about it.
No, we appreciate it. Need to state your name for the record.
Thank you, I need a Moses.
All right, any other citizens' comments today? All right, we, finding a zoning position, they have a meeting this Thursday, March 17th at 6:00 p.m. There are, I have been, about, Dollar General and the Exeter sign. All right, committee reports, building grounds, parks out for safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne. Mr. Mayor, I have a, I move to approve, to reject all bids that were submitted on February 11th, 2015 for the request for a proposal for lawn care and maintenance services. Alderman Persick, do we have a second? No, second. Second by Alderman Persick.
Bringing us up to the, yeah. Yeah, we're revising the scope of work after reviewing some of the shoreline out there and having our point lands advisor go out and look. We're going to probably reduce the mowing areas, that's one thing we're changing. The other thing is, the RFP, we're putting together this checklist so that when they do submit the proposals now, they'll have a box they're just going to fill in of what the cost will be, so that they'll all be uniform. So we read it, what we call a cab sheet for sure, the, for the RFP. So the draft will be prepared for building Brown Street, we'll get it first, and then we'll advertise, re-bid, advertise for March 18th, and then we'll look for those in April, and then everything looks good, trying to redo the work by April 21st.
I think we're going to break down a meeting through the lobby.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to do a free conference meeting where they, it's going to be optional if they want to come, and then we'll actually go tour the parks. The contractor is going to want to see areas when they want to mow and then mow. I think when you guys see the revised draft, it'll be on the agenda for building Brown Street next week. You guys will look at it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, hold please.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, March 11th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. Water Surges, Streets and Alley's Committee, Studer, Alderman Kerwin?
Next scheduled meeting Wednesday, March 11th, 2015, 5:30 p.m.
Land Law and Police and Esda, Alderman Studer, Alderman Studer?
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 10th, 2015, at 5:30 p.m.
Good, right. Finance and Management and Land Acquisition, Alderman Studer, Alderman Studer?
I move to approve the March 3rd, 2015, a cost payable report in the amount of $276,502.48.
That motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second? Sorry. Second by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion? Roll call, hold please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Persi, I'm, I'm sorry, Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Studer?
Studer?
Studer.
Okay.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 17th, 2015, at 16:00 p.m.
Orders to License Committee, Alderman Hall, Alderman Evans?
Second meeting, we're ordered to write, prepare and issue administrative judgment due to communication of violation of traffic regulations concerning stability, project, condition of vehicles and display of vehicle real tax license. Second meeting also ordered to permit Chapter 92-24 prohibiting positive slope of private property on city made date property. The next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, March 10th, 2015, at 16:00 p.m.
First off, quick party, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick?
Nothing at this time, executive session, late.
All right, City Administrator's report, Mr. Graff?
Yeah, we met with IDOT, Fire Department, Police Department and Esda about Cape County Bridge project coming up. So they asked for coordination in regards to how they're going to respond if there are emergencies when the bridge gets closed down the one lane. The one thing that we did learn is probably put the lights up. If the weather breaks next week, they'll get the traffic lights up, probably about three weeks. Then once traffic lights are up, they'll put barriers up and they'll start the construction of the project, probably somewhere around mid-April. If everything goes, no major problems, they could be done by the earliest, it'll be August first. They do know about our Catfish Days Festival, so we're going to try to, if everything goes well, it might be done a week, week or two earlier. The lights are, they have what they call the opticons on, so if the emergency services come up, they won't be able to activate, so the lights will, if they're going westbound, they'll show green lights, the fire trucks will get through, setting up police cars, NRS vehicles have opticon. So I think everything was great meeting, we was, had some good conversation there on the contactings now, I'll be forwarded to the police, fire and Esda.
Tony, did they give you any idea what they're going to do?
They're going to be fixing joints. There's some of the joints they got to redo and make sure that they're making those purposes. They do have some in the apartment area underneath the bridge, they got some minor repairs there, but nothing where they got to put in the rivers, they're going to be able to, what they call, hang off the bridge, or get to the shoreline. So those are very minor. They don't have any specialized material they have to order for this, so we're not going to be waiting on any type of special steel or iron like we did with this planes, this planes of bridge. And then they'll end up coring out by an inch and a half off the deck, and then they'll be put that new, like they did with the Fort Creek on 53 over there by La Bar East. So that, that'll take, they got to cure that for about seven to 10 days under the weather when they put that concrete down for the deck. So there'll be, there'll be a time where you'll see no activity on the bridge once they scarred it off and they put that out.
They're going to chip an inch and a half of the existing concrete surface away and they're going to redo it.
Yeah.
Similar to what they did on the Big Bridge in Lockport a few years back, they did. So that's what it's going to take, so I was wondering where.
Yeah, that's, that's the market's going to take up.
Yeah, that's the biggest, the biggest part of the project, and that's why I said, and then, you know, if the weather ain't right, it can take longer to cure. If the weather's ideal or perfect, they're looking at seven to 10 days, you know, so, and that's one thing we'll have to educate the public on, this paper, because, you know, you're not, once that cures, they go away, they, you know, they're not working, people think, what are they doing, they're not doing anything.
Well, you're going to get a lot of that.
And that's, that's the reason why you can't do anything.
Yeah, the only concern that the fire and police brought up was, when it's being cured, they'll have to keep, you know, an extra eye out there. IDOT's asking them to keep an extra eye, support for the police, so that people aren't, you know. People could walk on it right after it's gone, it's not any trucks, you know, they're going to be careful. And they are going to put some extra lights up, so if you're driving along that lane, you'll, it will be lighting better, because right now we're going to open up lights on that bridge. So they will put up supportive lights, so as people are driving through.
What did they say the width will be of the temporary?
And their advertising is 10 feet. It'll actually probably be more closer to 11, 11 and a half, like for truck traffic. They're going to reduce all truck traffic, and I travel on this, it's more than wider than 10 feet. So we will probably see a reduction in some truck traffic because they'll get posted, it's going out to all the traffic dispatchers now, so they'll have to detour around, stay on I-55 basically, really get used to it. Yeah, they used to that some. They will put, they will put signage, signage farther up, they're going to put a sign up all the way on Pieto Road, because that was suggested, have to put it up, if they get up the 102. So they're going to put up informational signs about detour at Pieto Road, so they could head, head down Pieto Road or go down North River to go to bypass trucks. They'll keep one sidewalk always open, so there will be a sidewalk that'll be open on the side of where traffic's going, and we'll see. Construction wise, if they think it, do it, it could be done by mid-July if we get it, whether dry.
Weather works for it.
Yeah, the weather works for it.
Traffic's going to be nice.
Yeah. The other, the other project, the Route 102 project, they'll be starting that project probably in about four weeks, you know, that's going to be curb and gutter for the ADA and for the intersections. They'll be doing that worst, then whole repairs, and then they'll be doing the resurfacing. But they'll never be, they'll never be closed down, so 102 will always be open, two lanes, they'll never, they're never going to go down to one lane, so there'll always be two lane traffic on 102, and that's about, it'll probably be about a four to five week construction project, 102. The Union Pacific will not be doing any work until late summer, if they are doing any crossing work at all with some of the rails, improvements they have to do on the crossings. But most likely, there's a delay now in doing the piers in the river, they got environmental review going on now, it's not done yet, so they're not expecting to get permission to even build the piers in the river. That might not even happen until fall. So it could even be spring projects. I think, I think this year for the Union Pacific, we're not going to be, probably great crossings get done until spring of next year, which will be good because of all the construction we got going on. South Arsenal, Route 53, we're waiting now just for the green light from the final review. We had to send in some revised documents about four weeks ago, we're waiting for IDOT to finally set off on those. One of them was a change on the drainage easement and our sewer and water up there. So hopefully, we're going to be able to go off the bid. We do know we can go local bidding on that now, we don't have to go through the state bid letting, because the state is not doing any bid letting right now, or the governor's rule of no funding, so we're going to be allowed to bid that ourselves, we don't have to go through the state bid letting, so that'll, that'll be good. So I think South Arsenal will probably get up the bid, if everything goes right with IDOT's approval, probably on the first week in April. Hopefully, the bid's out, maybe in April. Pieto, we got a meeting tomorrow with the county, we're waiting for their final review of the final documents, also the right of way dedication. So if everything goes good tomorrow, we should be able to submit those to IDOT, and IDOT's basically just waiting for those documents, so. And that one, we're going to be able to bid locally too, so we'll be able to put that up to bid. We're trying to see if we can still make it. I think that one, we're probably going to put a bid probably till May, which we're going to award in June. Just knowing ahead of time, if we're going to bid on that Arsenal project, we'll know this project's coming right behind us, and we should be those two. It'll help a little bit with the delay too, maybe 30, 45 days difference, put along both intersections in the same category, start it up and mobilize it, get one mobilized, get the second one maybe starting in July. Both projects should be able to get done with no problem before, before we get, get it up. Some big bids in. And then we're just waiting for the 53 water main, we still got another, we can have two weeks for the public notice in regards to that, for the IP loan, and then you'll see the loan docs coming to you at the people meeting. And then Austin Tyler did give us a guarantee that the bid is still good for another 60 days, so as soon as we get the loan, loan documents to you guys, or the first meeting in April, we approve those loan docs, we'll be able to give them the award, we'll get started by the end of April on that project.
Construction happy.
Right. Construction happy. We, we're moving forward with Tom Matt up at Ridge Park, we finally got a name to where they can bring more electric in. They got the permit finally to build their, what they call DC station, they got to build up at Dresden and Pine Bluff Road, so the county gave them that permit, kind of paid them their permits, so hopefully, they'll be able to get that started in the next four weeks. But the Michelin electricity will be there, they're running lines now, so there will be enough power for Michelin to start up with no problem in July or August for their project. And the recruiting office is all set up for the Michelin, it's in the old, the old studio, the Penney Studio, and you'll see a banner out there pretty soon to where people can stop in, and they'll put in their applications. We'll have more information in regards to the recruiting for those jobs for Michelin.
Are they taking that now?
If you walk in, when I was there today, he's, people are walking there already, and he'll, yeah, he'll pass, he'll pass some information to him, the flyer, and they'll, he'll take acts. He'll be in there more on a steady basis, probably starting next week, and his help will be there, so. It's kind of, it's going to be kind of interesting because they're, they're actually, because of the recruiting, they're actually showing the tires, so hopefully, next week, you'll actually see the type of tires they're going to store, so the people will know, they're applying for jobs with the type of material that they're going to be working with, they be around. So they're going to have a nice Michelin display going on in their recruiting office. I'm going to encourage, we get the flyer ready to go, we'll let you guys know. I did tell the guy, it'd be nice to do an open house, invite, you know, Chamber of Commerce and other officials to stop by the recruiting office, they're used themselves. So we're just thinking about doing that in April, tonight for hours, you know, before the law. We welcome anybody to stop in.
I'm going to bring up Campos.
Oh, and then I gave out a memo, referenced, we did, we did try to get all the documents on the lawsuit that was settled action with Campos versus the Wilmington Police Department, and the judge accepted the order of what they call the conference of settlement, and the information was all put in the mailboxes and mailed from the document. In regards to the settlement offer with the insurance company made with them, we have, they already got more plus a thousand dollars on credit yield. So you guys got all those documents, you can mail boxes.
That's all, that it? Yep. All right. Attorney's report, Mr. Irvin.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, I've prepared the draft, interstate sign ordinance, that's going to be forth-sending on Thursday, also reviewed the proposed maintenance proposal for the parks, and I made recommendations for that. Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to go into executive session. Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session at 7:29 p.m. for matters of litigation 2C11. Motion by Alderman, Larry Hall, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin, roll call, hold please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Milton, the command of executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to come out of executive session at 7:45 p.m.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, do we have a second?
One second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, roll call, hold please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Thank you. There is no action to be taken as we go to executive session tonight, seeing that. I need a motion to adjourn. Second, dear. I'll pay him.
All right.
I'll adjourn. Thank you for coming.